Good evening. This is the February 15th Council Infrastructure Committee meeting. And we have a few items on our agenda. And we also have a new infrastructure committee this year, starting now. So please introduce yourself. That way everybody knows.
I'm Stacy Goodman.
And I'm Victoria Hunt. And I'm looking forward to serving on the Council Infrastructure Committee.
Great, thank you. So we'll start this year off well with our first topic is the Squawk-Tallis Community Connections, talking about Metro bus and so forth. And I believe Mary Jo, you're gonna lead us off on that.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for having us. I'm Mary Jo from the Office of Sustainability. And we're here to provide a pretty brief update to the Tallis-Squawk Community Connections project. And I always get the order of that wrong. We've been told that it's actually Squawk-Tallis. But anyways, welcome. And here with me tonight is Lisa Marshall, the City's Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator, and Emily Kish, who is the King County Metro's Community Connections Project Manager. And we're gonna each provide just a little bit of the update to kind of animate what we've been up to so far. But tonight, I'm also here to represent the people in our City's Transportation Mobility team. And to give you a little bit of background about what that team is, it's a team of interdepartmental staff that are led by the Public Works Engineering Department. And so the staff that participate in that team include Office of Sustainability, Development Services, Economic Development, Communications, the Executive Office, and we also confer with Public Works Operations and also the Police Department. And we also have some ad hoc folks that we bring into our discussion, people like Amy Dukes, who can help us with grants and development projects. The team actually is such a dynamic group that we can provide 360-degree perspective of mobility issues in the city. So it's a really great way for us to look at people, projects, programs, and policies from different vantage points. And so that's a really important group for us. And the reason that I wanted to share the team with you, especially new council folks, is that it was this team that came together and crafted and submitted the application to the King County Community Connections pilot project. So we really wanted to bring something forward that was meaningful to the city and something that was something that we can solve one of our mobility problems with. So while tonight, I serve as the sort of lead liaison with this particular project, because we have so many people on our team, you'll probably see over time that various people will take a lead or support role depending on where we are in the project. So I wanted to give you a little bit of background. Before we go further, Sheldon, maybe you can help me pull up the memo? Perfect. So all of you have received in your packet this sort of update memo. And the reason I wanted to pull it up is there's some background information about what the Community Connections program is. And it used to be, and it was referred to from Agenda Bill 70 to 80, as the Alternative Services Pilot. It's the same exact program, just with a new refreshed name. And Emily can add to that if she'd like. But essentially, it's a great and innovative highlight opportunity for the county to work with local jurisdictions and community partners to try to have and engage communities in solving some of the mobility issues that they identify. So it's a really neat process that King County has put together to help communities do that. The other part of the memo includes the city's partnership role. And so you can see in there, I've also, for the purpose of the new council members to this particular committee, I've also put the links to our previous council touches. We've had a time where we talked to CIC before, and we've also addressed the council as a whole when we applied for the project. So those are there, just for your reference as you like. There is a $15,000 city investment in this project, along with staff time. That $15,000 is not identified in terms of how we're gonna spend it yet, but it's really for resources when we get to the implementation phase of this project and program. The other part of the memo describes that there's a community involvement piece, and so I wanted to call that to your attention. The team was super excited to be one of eight communities that was selected in the King County Communities Connection program. And we were excited because this particular project, the Squawk-Tallis project, is such a place where, you know, there's steep hills, so it's not a great bike walk place. It's not served by transit, and yet it's really close to the Transit Center and it's really close to our major corridors, SR 900, Newport, I-90. And so that, along with the fact that the community up there is pretty unique, we've got some interesting mobility needs. We have seniors, we have residents, we have commuters by way of shift workers up there. We have people with a variety of mobility needs that this particular project seemed perfectly suited for the type of pilot project that we could work with Metro and ask for Metro's help in kind of cracking that code, you know, to try to get people from the hills to the valley to be able to get connections to transit and other places. So I also want to share with you, I want to be brief because we're just providing a quick update. The project was slated to start in fall of 2017 through a Metro and City agreed calendar. And at that time, the team at King County Metro and our mobility team got together to sort of launch and set the project plan and the timeline. Shortly after that, and we convened that group in September, shortly after that, we sent some of our city staff out to Squawk-Tallis. And the people that we sent up were more of our newer staff members. So it was kind of a really great way for those staff members to get to know those neighborhoods. We sent Tim Dutter, our Economic Development Manager, Martha Sosarossi, our Human Services and Sustainability Coordinator, and Lisa Marshall up to talk to those communities, to identify who might be not only interested but willing to step into a leadership role and make a commitment to go through the King County Metro Community Connections process, which was a process to invite people to share with their neighbors and their friends that live in Squawk and to be able to help Metro and the city really fine tune and identify mobility needs. And then also work through the Metro process of creating design and concept solutions for anything that might be able to be a possible resolve for some of the needs that they have. So with that, the Stakeholder Working Group that was created from that effort, they're not a board, but they play this very critical role in providing both a liaison and a kind of a checkpoint for some of the work we're doing. And I wanted to have Lisa and talk a little bit about the mix of that group and sort of maybe just how you shook the trees to invite people. That'd be great.
Sure. So thank you, Mr. Chairman and fellow committee members, for the time tonight to provide you this quick update. So as Mary Jo said, I'm the Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator and also a member of the City's Communication Team. And our project team reached out to folks in the Squawk and Tallis area neighborhoods to create the stakeholder group. Some of the people chosen had expressed specific interest in this particular project, and others were referred to us. These stakeholders that were chosen were chosen because they represent significant HOAs in these areas, businesses as well in these neighborhoods, and also those that are quite connected in those neighborhoods. So the list of the group members is actually provided in the memo that you have, so you can take a look at that. Each member was asked to complete a commitment form to secure their interest in working with us. And also, the form served as a way for the City and Metro team to learn more about each stakeholder and confirm that we did have the right representatives and we had enough representation from both neighborhoods. All of the stakeholders chosen, I'm happy to say, are extremely engaged. They're very excited about this project, and they are very excited about the leadership role that they're playing within the neighborhood and their ownership of this project as well. In addition, from a communication standpoint, our team has provided strategic direction and assistance to this project team in getting the word out. To date, the survey's been open a little over a week. We've collected about 316 responses, which I know Emily will talk more to. And then for those Squawk and Tallis residents that might be listening tonight or watch this on another date, King County has an actual link that you can go to. But we've also created a really quick link for those Issaquah residents to remember easily. It's issaquawa.gov/connect, and it'll redirect to King County's page with the survey and more information.
Thanks. Yeah. So, I mean, it's pretty neat. We ended up having our very first Stakeholder Working Group meeting right before the holidays in 2017. And it was a pretty dynamic group. They had a lot to share and a lot to say. And I'm gonna let Emily talk a little bit more about how that meeting went. But I also wanted to let you know that, again, while it's not a board and it's not a city advisory group, what it is, is it's this community working group. We had former Mayor Butler go up to that group. And as he walked in, he acknowledged that, you know, finding solutions to transportation problems is pretty daunting and a challenge. And so he wished everybody luck, and he also thanked everybody for their leadership. So I think that sort of opened up the idea that, you know, that it's not always one size fits all for any particular community. And because this unique program really is looking at a variety of tools and options that Metro has sort of laid out, it's not necessarily bus service is gonna work for everybody. It could be a variety of different types of solutions. So I think it was great for the Stakeholder Working Group to understand and hear that. So with that, if you could talk a little bit about the meeting and sort of the survey that followed and the tool, that'd be great.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Emily Kish. I'm with King County Metro. I am the Project Manager for the Squawk Mountain-Tallis Community Connections Project. I work fairly closely with Kathy Snow, who is the Program Manager for Community Connections. We also have Jenna Franklin, who's part of our Community Relations Staff at Metro. She's been helping us navigate the outreach process with Lisa and Mary Jo's help. So as Mary Jo and Lisa mentioned, we engaged the Stakeholder Working Group starting in December. Partnership is a fundamental piece of the Community Connections program. We strongly, we feel pretty strongly about engaging our local jurisdictions and communities in this process. And because we don't have the local knowledge of the community, we lean pretty heavily on our partners. And so we were really thankful to have Mary Jo and Lisa help us with that stakeholder process. We really feel that their approach was really deliberate in identifying stakeholders who really represent the perspectives and interests of the workers and residents in Squawk Mountain and Tallis. So we're really thankful for that. As Mary Jo mentioned, the Stakeholder Working Group is really our guide in this process. They help us sort of identify what those key needs are. And then they keep us in check, as she said, you know, when we're developing the solution concepts, it's up to them to sort of say, "We don't really feel like this is addressing the needs that we've identified and that the community's identified, so maybe we need to take a step back." Or, "This looks great. You guys have done a phenomenal job. Let's just move forward with all of them," which we, you know, always hope for. So at our first Stakeholder Working Group meeting, it was a great opportunity for us to get to know the stakeholders, also for the stakeholders to get to know each other, because even though it's a small community, some folks didn't know each other. So that was great. We had sort of a basic understanding of the demographics and the transportation needs just from the application, but the stakeholders really brought that insight and those perspectives for sort of basic transportation needs in those communities. And that helped us sort of shift the dialogue to, okay, well, what are the sort of key destinations in the community and what are the mobility barriers to accessing those destinations? And that's what helped us localize the need survey, which is out now. So the need survey is a tool that we use in all of our outreach processes for Community Connections. And it gives us an understanding of what the transportation needs are in the community. It asks people where they're going, how are they getting to those places, what hinders them from using transit or transportation options, and then also what might help them, just to give us a basic understanding of what are people experiencing and how are they experiencing it. After the, so as Lisa mentioned, the stakeholder, or the, sorry, Transportation Needs Survey is out. It started, it was online February 6th. It'll close the 28th of February. At that point, we will take all of the data that we have gotten. Hopefully, it's twice as many as right now. And we'll share that information with our Stakeholder Working Group in the spring. At that meeting, we will look to the Stakeholder Working Group to help us articulate the key need statements. And those are three to five need statements that we'll develop through a process. And then those need statements will really direct the development of the solution concepts that we propose on the Metro side. So that's what's coming up next.
Yeah, thank you. So I wanted to be able to move down a little bit, and maybe Sheldon, you can help me? Yeah. So in the packet and in the memo, put sort of a brief, very snapshot-y timeline about where we are in terms of next steps. It's not the full meal deal until, you know, what happens is the result of the survey process, but there's a very draft schedule about when we're gonna have another Stakeholder Working Group meeting and that sort of thing. We'd like to be able to come back and provide some update to you so that it not only keeps you engaged in the project, but also your voices as, you know, council members out in the community, you know, talk to people in Squawk and Tallis and direct them to the survey. And while this is just for this particular area, you know, there's other needs all over Issaquah. And so as we look at pilots like this, you know, our hope is that they can then maybe expand in the future, or we can learn a lot of things from this. It's a multi-year project, so, you know, opportunities exist in South Cove and it exists in the Highlands and pretty much everywhere we can think of when it comes to transportation. So we'd like you guys to feel free to sort of share the news and be informed. So we'd like to come back as there's certain milestones along the way. So with that, we'd like to wrap it up and see if there's any questions that you may have or any comments from anyone from the public or...
Anybody?
I don't have any questions. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I am familiar with this last mile need for some sort of mobility, because I actually live on Squawk Mountain and often have a stroller, and there's only so much sidewalk on certain streets. And I think that this is a really important program. I have a few questions. One is about the online survey. So is it completely online? And if it is completely online, how are you going to make sure that people that are maybe less familiar with using an online survey or less inclined to use an online survey are getting their voices and perspectives heard?
That was definitely a priority in terms of access and availability for people who were tech savvy or not, or had access or not. So maybe you can sort of address the way we've approached that.
So it is an online survey. We also have paper copies. We have outreach, yeah.
Here's one right here.
I just delivered them to Lisa tonight. They will be available at City Hall and then wherever city folks want to place them, people just need to return them back to City Hall. But we also have resources at Metro. We're happy to do in-person facilitated surveys. So if people need step-by-step direction, we're happy to walk through, sit down with folks. Translation services also, if needed, and group settings, we're happy to provide that. And then any kind of alternative formats of the surveys, we're happy to provide.
And then my other question, also related to the surveys, is it does seem that there's a number of surveys, which is to get increasingly detailed information. And I wondered if you are concerned at all about sort of survey fatigue, people seeing that, again, there's another survey and maybe I'm not gonna do the second survey, and how you could counterbalance that or what the plans are for that?
We did definitely have a conversation about that, because we did finish a sort of a citywide survey not too long ago. And definitely in the Office of Sustainability, we're really mindful of the idea that you can't have a survey every month. And so we did talk about that in terms of this being a sort of a smaller group, it's not a citywide survey, and with some handholding and with some community advocates, we felt like it was good timing. It wasn't right up against a previous survey. So I think we're really aware of it. I think we can always improve the way that we reach out. We're not using all the same tools. We talked about things like peak democracy and other ways of reaching, and this, using this Metro sort of derived tool was a good way to get sort of a variety of the styles that we talked about, paper, online, reach out. And so it feels a little different than some of our other surveys we've approached, but totally appreciate the comment.
I would just add too, for our process, we only use two surveys. So it's Transportation Needs and then the Solution Concepts. So the solutions that we developed to address those needs, we obviously want to know what people think about those to get that information to the Stakeholder Working Group. Also, I think we really look to the Stakeholder Working Group in these kinds of situations to express to folks, like, "This is really important. This is for us, by us." And so it's really important that we participate. So that's where that community outreach really plays a strong role in this.
Thank you. I was really glad to learn about this. Thanks.
So just another comment, I guess, give some folks a little overview of Community Connections in general, because this is something that's happening right here, but the program overall, why it's happening here and so forth, you could touch on that just a little bit. That'd be great.
You wanna take that?
I can, sure.
And where else it's happening or what's happening?
Sure. So Community Connections is a four-year demonstration program. It's a pilot program for Metro. It started in 2015, and the budget approval was 2015 to 2018. So the council sort of asked us to address a few couple of issues. One was service reduction mitigation. So in 2014, Metro went through a series of pretty major service cuts. So the first tenant of that was, okay, well, we have reduced a lot of routes. Now we need to go back and mitigate it. But these areas aren't really, they don't have the land use or the density or the infrastructure necessarily to support big bus, which we call fixed route. But there are other kinds of transportation solutions that we need to be thinking about because these folks still need something to service those needs. So that was one. The next one was the completion of what we call the Five Year Alternative Services Delivery Plan. So those were two specific projects on Vashon Island in southeast King County. And then the third tenant of that was the complementary services. So the way that we initiated that was to go out with an application process in 2016 to round out our 2017 projects. And through that application process, we selected eight communities, and Issaquah was one of them. And basically, again, using that tenant of innovative, cost-efficient transportation solutions where infrastructure or density or land use isn't there to support big bus, where can we sort of figure out some other solutions to address those transportation needs? So that's kind of a basic understanding.
So is there not one coming from Snoqualmie to here now that's actually running on the road?
Trailhead Direct, if that's...
That's one, that's another one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that's gonna start in March, or, sorry, not gonna start in March. I misspoke. It will start soon-ish in the spring, we're hoping. Please redact the March statement.
Yep.
I was thinking of last year. Anyway, so that is one that serves this area. I apologize, I've only been with this program for six months, so I don't know every single service that we have. So I don't know about the one to Snoqualmie, but...
So just, there's some other ones that have already started? You have Wheels on the Road already?
Oh, sure, in other areas, certainly, yes, yes. There is one in Snoqualmie, yes, Bampa-Woodenville, Kirkland-Kenmore.
Redmond-Mersey Island?
Yes, yes, yes. I thought you meant...
So those are phases that already have Wheels on the Road doing some, now it's kind of the second phase?
Definitely. We are, yeah, we're active in 25 different jurisdictions right now.
And cut into the chase, when do you actually expect Wheels on the Road of some sort with this, so people can anticipate and not wait in three months and not there there?
Sure.
And approximately, of course.
Yeah. So per our process, we hope to have some solution concepts probably this summer. And then we'll go through our implementation phase, so planning in-house. I would say by the end of the year, we would hope to have something out and working.
All right. So those communities can maybe start actually writing something in, right before the end of the year?
Yeah, and again, yeah. This is also, there's a testing and an evaluation period following Wheels on the Ground or the Thing on the Ground. And I hesitate saying that there's Wheels on the Ground, because, you know, being open to a variety of types of solutions, right?
Are we having levitated trains yet?
Yeah, maybe.
I don't know what else we have besides Wheels yet.
Well, right. But, you know, just the idea that there's a variety of different potential solutions when you think about sort of addressing the needs specifically. And so the testing and evaluation period is another additional period of time. So this is kind of a, it's a long-term investment from King County Metro's perspective, and it's also a partnership in the sense that, you know, the city's gonna have to work with the valuation and testing period to see if it's actually the thing that works. I think with the Trails Connect project, you know, we saw it launched last year, and we got a ton of feedback. People were super excited about it. But then we've got a lot we can do about the marketing and the adjustments to that. So I think redacting the timeline about when that's gonna happen is, yeah, I think some of these are considered to be a work in progress, and it's a pilot for that purpose.
But that one is a go for this summer or something?
It is, yes.
Good. All right. Great. Anything else? Thank you for coming. Really appreciate keeping us informed and keeping the public informed of what's coming so they can, you know, those folks that are involved in the group, but there's other folks that may be hearing of this, and then they can contact all of you or anybody else in the group in feedback, because hopefully we'll get it something that serves people well and with maybe minor adjustments as we go along.
Thanks for having us.
Better transit in this city is always gonna be better.
Thanks for having us.
All right. And I'll say, I was remiss and noted that I did not introduce myself at the beginning of this meeting, so I will do that now. And I'm Bill Ramos, Chair. All right, next up on our item is AB 7528, Solid Waste Contract Update. And we have Mike Bonkowski to let us know what's going on at... This is an action item we will be working on. So we're ready to go.
So we don't have the actual PowerPoint, so you get differently formatted PowerPoint. Okay. All right, like Bill said, I'm Mike Bonkowski with the Office of Sustainability, and I'm here tonight to recommend council authorization of a two-year extension for solid waste and recycling services contract with Recology Cleanscapes at no charge in rates. So first, for some background, and welcome to the new committee members, and apologies to Council Member Ramos, this may be a little bit repetitive from last, or from December's Council Infrastructure Committee meeting, but I wanted to make sure everybody had all of the information. So cities are given the option to contract for solid waste services or conduct services ourselves, or allow the Washington Utilities and Transport Station, WTC, to serve within our area. Issaquah has contracted for services for the last many years, and the current contract was procured through a competitive process in 2011 and expires in June of 2019. The contract currently allows for two two-year extension options at the city's sole discretion. And if we execute the first two-year extension as recommended, we'll have one extension option left. We're at... Second one? Yeah. So the main options open to the city, again, are to extend the current contract, enter into a competitive procurement process, or negotiate a new contract with Recology. And it may seem with the expiration of the contract out at June 2019 that it's early to talk about this, but the procurement process is long, and purchasing of trucks for any new contractor requires a certain lead time. So we would have to start within the next couple months if we were gonna do a competitive process. Okay, next slide. Okay. So OS begin working towards a recommendation, beginning in June of last year, by reviewing our current contract and other contracts in the region to see if there was anything that we wanted to add to our current contract that we thought would be beneficial. And some of those things you'll see in the proposed contract amendment towards the end of the presentation. In October, the Office of Sustainability hired Elway Research to conduct a customer satisfaction survey and contracted with Sound Resources Management Group to do a rate comparison study. And the survey and rate study were presented to CIC in December, and I'll go through them here in just a second. So next slide. So the survey, like I said, Elway contacted 543 randomly selected survey participants through phone and online in October of 2017. We looked at contacting both single-family residents and multifamily customers to kind of get a mix to see how satisfaction worked across those. We attempted to do outreach to get customers... We attempted to do outreach to get customer satisfaction data from commercial customers, but they weren't really forthcoming, and we weren't successful in getting enough to really have any ideas. So the survey has a 4.2% margin of error at a 95% level of confidence with the amount of people contacted, so...
That's not too far.
No, that's perfect. Is that the next one? Yeah. So the survey itself showed that we had very high customer satisfaction ratings across the board, and the city conducts customer satisfaction surveys periodically of our solid waste contracts. So our last one was in 2013, a year after Recology started the current contract, and before that, I believe, was in 2009 with Waste Management as the hauler. And most of the time, the customer satisfaction is fairly high. This one was a little higher even than customer satisfaction in 2013. There was only one item where satisfaction seemed to go down from that 2013 study, and that was on cleanliness of trucks, which might be expected after several years in the field. Over these seven aspects of service shown here, the average was 8.88 out of 10, with 10 being completely satisfied, and 43% of residents rated a 10 out of 10 for all seven of those aspects. So that's very high customer satisfaction. 22% of customer, or of surveyed people had called Recology in the last year, with a majority of those also rating their experience a 10 out of 10 for customer, excuse me, customer service. Another question we asked was about the Recology store in Gilman Village, just to see whether people knew about it, and we were happily surprised to find that 49% of residents had been to the Recology store and more than that knew about it. There were also some anecdotal, there was an open-ended question asked about what would you see as a service improvement, and of the 15 responses for kind of areas needing improvement, only 4% mentioned cost as an issue. Most of the others were about adding services, clarity of signage, and scheduling and frequency of pickup. So then the next one. So the rate comparison study showed several interesting results, and before I dive into them, as a big caveat, the rates can't be compared directly. They're not really apples to apples from city to city. As each city contracts competitively for their contracts, there's a mix of services that are offered in each city. There's different collection options, kind of a mix of residential versus commercial customers, geography, distance to transfer stations, et cetera. And all of those components are built into the rates during the proposal process. If we look at just the rates by sector, which is this chart, this is how we compare with the different eight cities that were surveyed, and we selected cities that were in King County in pretty close proximity to us, that we had data for, and that had a mix of different haulers out of the three major haulers in the area. Our average residential customer, which is about 8,500 accounts, pays less than any of the other eight cities surveyed. Renton is starred because their service level doesn't match up to our average service level because they do every other week collection as opposed to weekly, and our rates are also still lower. Excuse me. Our multifamily commercial, which is about 400 containers on the ground, the average cost per cubic yard is the highest out of the eight cities surveyed. And then our roll-off customers, which is large boxes, temporary containers, and compactors, which is about 46 regularly serviced containers, pays the lowest rate per cubic yard out of the eight cities questioned or surveyed. Any questions so far? Yeah, I was going to stop. There's a lot of information all going.
Well, I just have one question about that. When you said, you know, lowest and then highest and the lowest, can you explain maybe why that is?
Yeah, so we have some cross-subsidization that's been built into our contracts over the last several contract cycles, and we'd like to work to kind of get out of that, but it's very difficult without doing a large increase to one of the customer sectors. So put it another way, I guess, our, our commercial rates subsidize the reduction in our residential rates.
Okay, that's, that's what it kind of looks like.
Right. And you can see there's a couple of other cities where that's the case as well. Redmond has a very similar pattern to us. Let's see, Kirkland was a little bit the other direction, and they've been working to level that out also. So there's a couple of different places where there is some cross-subsidization between the different sectors. Yeah.
In addition to it being the difference between commercial and single-family, there's also this pattern where the commercial bill per cubic yard is highest, but then the roll-off is, roll-off service per cubic yard is, is the lowest rate for that category. So I am confused as to why there's the difference in those two categories.
There aren't very many roll-off containers, and they're, they're a different service level because they have like container rentals and haul fees and a couple of different service lines as well in their costs. So this is the average cost for service of, per yard of garbage for that customer in Issaquah. Does that make sense?
Why would a commercial multifamily not convert to the roll-off service if they saw that this is a much lower rate?
Right. So roll-off is for like large, like 40-yard, 20-yard containers and compactors, and so not all multifamily, some multifamily businesses do have roll-off service. So there are compactors in a lot of the larger multifamily in Issaquah already.
Okay, so, so it's sort of, so it's the small, tends to be the small multifamily that are in that middle...
Right, and other commercial customers, right? So it's anybody with a 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 8-yard dumpster.
Thank you.
And then, next slide. So as an overall comparison point, there's a different way to look at the data also that doesn't show you, that first doesn't show you necessarily the value that each of the customers are getting, so the value of the total contract, because that first slide doesn't tell you whether Issaquah itself is getting a good value for the service that we're paying for. So we had the statistician apply each city's rates to Issaquah's customer mix to show estimated revenue. So if, if we took each city's rates and applied them to our customers, this is where the revenue would kind of line up, and that's the chart on the right. And you can see Issaquah falls kind of right in the middle. And additionally, on the left, you see the results of some of the most recent procurement processes, and they're listed by year and type of procurement for those same eight cities. And I think it's important to compare these charts. You can see, for example, that, looking at the chart on the left, City of Semamish rates decreased 6.3% through their competitive process recently, and that was a request-for-bid process. But then if you compare it to the previous chart and this chart on the right, they still have the highest overall cost to their customers. And interesting to note also, if you look at all the cities on the left that got a decrease in their last procurement process, they're all higher than Issaquah on the right, and all of the ones that got an increase based, because of their procurement process, were below us on the right. So it feels like we're in a pretty happy medium there. I think Kirkland was the only example where they had no rate change, they did a procurement process, and if they had selected the winning proponent, their rates would have gone up 10%, and so their council opted to extend. And that was in 2017.
So just a quick question on explaining more revenue, so that $5,800, whatever, what does, what does that really mean? I'm not, I'm not sure of that value. So what, explain that number better.
Sure. So that's the number, and that's in thousands of dollars. If you took the rates of those cities and applied them to Issaquah's customer total, so 8,500 residential customers, what was it, 400 commercial containers and 48 drop boxes, then that would be the revenue derived from that mix of customers.
The cost to the consumers.
Correct.
Versus revenue. So it's cost to consumers that are, everybody in the city would pay a total of that for, for that service.
Right.
Gotcha. Okay, revenue kind of confused me versus cost to consumer. Thank you.
Okay, next slide. So based on these and given the high customer satisfaction and the favorable current contract rates, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. OS believes extending the current contract for two years is the best option. We've also been working with Recology to identify some contract additions and clarifications that will be included in the extension through the contract amendment. Okay, next slide. We'll detail now what's included in that contract amendment. So in 2014, the city amended the contract to include a section, excuse me, on carbon-neutral operations for Issaquah services. The 2014 amendment stated they would make a good faith effort toward this goal. The contract also specifies CNG be used for operation vehicles for this contract. The proposed amendment is a big step towards meeting that carbon-neutral goal. Recology is currently contracted, or recently contracted with King County Wastewater Treatment Division to purchase RNG, which is renewable natural gas that's created as part of the treatment of waste at the wastewater treatment plant. And RNG has a much lower carbon footprint than CNG. Additionally, we've talked, we've got in the contract sharing the cost of a container weight study. When the contractors bid a contract, part of the formula for determining rates is based on the estimated weight of a 32-gallon container for a single-family and of one yard of commercial garbage for commercial rates. And as Issaquah has kind of increased the amount of food waste diverted from the garbage, these weights may or may not be changing. Recology agrees to partner on a study to verify some of our assumptions about weights, and this could result in a reduction of rates for our residents, and also would contribute to having better data for any future procurement process that we plan to do. So it would help any proponent dial in their rates a little bit better. We put in that Recology would work with us on looking into a tool lending library for the City of Issaquah. It's an idea that's begun happening in other areas. There's a new one opening down in Federal Way, either recently or very soon. Recology will support moving this forward with money that's already in the contract's outreach budget. Additionally, there is an item that was in the contract that hasn't, yeah?
Can you explain the tool lending library a little bit?
Sure, absolutely.
What is it, and who can borrow tools?
So it's just like a library only for tools, or it doesn't have to just be tools. There's some that have like different party supplies for different themed parties, like cake molds and decorating sets and things that people shouldn't have to buy just one time and then stick on a shelf. I think the Highlands is particularly interested with some of the sizes of their garages. They would love to be able to check out some heavier equipment for different projects, things like that. And so typically, this is run by a nonprofit organization and has a location that's like a warehouse where they store all of these different things for people to check out. And then, you know, just like a library, you would have a membership, and you would check it out and return the item when you're done.
So who would own the tools?
So we're looking for a group right now. This would not be Recology or the city. So usually, like I said, it's a nonprofit of some kind, so we began talking with the Highlands Council, for example, or there might be a church sometimes that also will host. So there's different ideas. It's still in the very early stages.
Okay.
We're kind of excited about it, so, yeah.
So just clarify, so tools, you're talking like, you know, table saw, you know, you mentioned molds or something, I mean, like, just, you know, rattle off a few of those possibilities, maybe to get more concrete.
Sure. So drills, ratchet sets, table saw, like you mentioned, lawnmower even, or, you know, any kind of tool, or, like I said before, also, like, if you wanted to do a Lego-themed birthday party, you know, the supplies might be available in a kit to be able to go and check out, so that you could then return it, and then somebody else would be able to do it later, and you wouldn't have to try and resell or store that stuff in your house.
So not just working tools, but one-time-use kinds of things?
Right, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And Recology has helped put one together before in Seattle, so they have some experience with it, and they know a little bit about what goes into it. And then there's also, King County is willing to help as well, and they've had experience putting together a couple. So in the contract, there's an annual cart cleaning service offered to residents, and it's an underutilized service in our contract, and we want Recology to promote it more and put it in the annual service guide. So we put that into the contract amendment as well, that it be promoted and put in place. There's some language clarification on multifamily compost, a section of the contract. Initially, multifamily compost was a new service in this contract when we first contracted with Recology, and there was a cost to that new service being embedded for all multifamily properties that participated. And there was a cap on the amount of properties that could participate based on that cost. We've never hit that cap, and so we're proposing the amendment to remove that cap from the program and keep the embedded service in place. So that was kind of a clarification. And then importantly, like I said before, all of these contract changes come with no increase in rates to the customers. And then a last one. In addition, Recology is committed to some additional items without codifying them in the contract. Many are already in the current contract, and we just wanted to reconfirm them with Recology. We've asked them to do a dumpster inventory. We've noticed going around that there's some lids missing, and some of the casters have been breaking on dumpsters, and some of them are in condition that we would like to see improved. And so we have them completing an inventory by April 30th of this year and giving us a plan to repair with the fixes to those dumpsters being completed by November 1st of 2018. Additionally, they'll do greenhouse gas inventory and a plan for zero-carbon emissions, for reaching zero-carbon emissions for Issaquah operations, which will be updated to reflect the difference in RNG from CNG in their calculations. And the target for that is June 30th of 2018 to receive that plan for reaching zero-carbon emissions. And then we've asked them to continue to focus on contamination reduction for recycling and compost, which was an issue that residents brought up at the December CIC meeting. This is my favorite garbage boat, our garbage truck picture. Any questions?
I don't think I have a question.
I, I was trying to find it, and I'm not able to find it, but there is language about amending the, the contract to remove a multifamily compost, and is that the, that refers to that upper lid that you were just...
Correct. That's removing the cap on the multifamily compost participation for the embedded service for multifamily properties.
Okay, and that, and that was because the cap was never reached, so the service, that was what I was looking to clarify, that multifamily compost will still be available at the same level?
Correct. It'll be available now to as many multifamily properties as that we can get involved. We had an issue getting property managers to get on board with the program, and that's kind of been the stumbling block or the obstacle to getting this program really going. And so Recology is committed to working with as many multifamily property owners as we can get on board. And the service, because it's embedded, it'll be at no additional cost to those multifamily properties.
And also, the, the recommendation is to use the two-year extension option. I wondered if you could speak a little bit about the, the bid and why that is not the recommendation?
So I think in looking at where our rates are in the comparison and where our customer satisfaction is, we felt like... we felt like if we went out for a procurement process at this time, based on that and where other recent procurements ended up, that we wouldn't be able to see a rate reduction. And so we felt that it was more favorable to stick with the current rate structure for our customers. Wait two years, see where the atmosphere or the market is at that point.
One question I had in the actual contract amendments, I looked in one and it was addressed in Section 2.1.28. It said, "Community recycling shall be deleted from the contract." That wasn't addressed anywhere else. What does that really mean?
So the community recycling section was the commitment by Recology to bring clean cardboard to the Atwork Recycling Center in order for them to have materials to process as part of their employee training program and also as a revenue source for Atwork. And they no longer operate that recycling center there, so we struck that from the contract.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so, discussion?
We probably need a motion on the table, don't we?
Motion and anything to discuss? Well, the motion is, the administration recommends a two-year extension without bid or anything, just take the current one and extend it with current prices and with these amendments they talked about to the contract.
Okay.
So discussion on the administration's recommendation.
I would second the motion. And I like the reasoning. I just thought you had a really great presentation and the data that you have and the explanation about that data I think makes sense to do the extension rather than to do the bid process with all the other things we have going on in the city. I'm not sure that that's something that we need to add to our work plan when it looks like we're doing really well with this contract and with Recology. Sure enjoy the store. That's really fun.
I had a concern about the fact that we do have the highest rates for the commercial multifamily, and there doesn't seem to be any amendments with the contract to make any changes to that. So while we have a very, we have the lowest rate for the cities that are compared for the single-family homes, we do have the highest rate for the multifamily commercial. And it seems like as that population potentially grows with the rest of our population, having that, that population have the highest rates is something that we would want to look into changing our position on this, on this list of cities or citizens. That's my biggest concern with not going out or not considering the bid.
Sounds like, looks like David wants to add something to this?
Sorry, I'm helping you phone a friend. David Fujimoto, Sustainability Director. So on the commercial rates and the rate comparison, it's important to note that that cost is an average cost per yard across all the different service levels, and so when that, you look at that comparison, part of the reason, or a couple of reasons for why the commercial multifamily rates are higher for those front-load containers is because the way that our rate structure works. So there is, there is some cross-subsidization that happens between sectors, but the other important part is that our rate structure is linear, meaning, so we have container sizes from a one-yard container to one and a half, two, four, six, eight, et cetera. And so essentially, a four-yard container costs as much as a two, twice as much as a two-yard container. An eight-yard container costs twice as much as a four-yard container, so it's a very linear rate structure, and that's uncommon in the region. Part of the way, the reason for why it's structured that way is to provide a strong incentive for folks to transition to recycling service. And so there is a pretty significant rate benefit if you switch from an eight-yard container to a six-yard container by recycling or by adding compost service, which is now no longer capped. So there are some options built into the contract in terms of service that folks can switch to. So that's an important piece to kind of consider in the overall picture.
Address that for you?
I think it does. I think that also in the packet, there is a lot of information about how different cities are different and the different populations of different cities are different, things like yard waste. You might see a higher rate for our city than another city, but that's partly because the yards are a different size. And I think that this, this level of detail is also helpful to explain differences in how the rate structure works and why the numbers are there. I still think, though, that having the highest commercial, the highest rate for commercial in all the cities is a concern.
All right, and I think there can be things that can be done a little bit year by year to help reduce some of that cross-subsidization, but it's a long-term plan. And I think, yeah, we would, we would have to look into it and see what the path would be to get there. For example, with annual CPI increases, you could try and put the brunt of the increase on to the residential sector and leave the commercial sector the same, and over time, that would start to even it out.
I guess a comment question. I think I recall you said during your presentation that you didn't, you weren't able to get a lot of information back from the commercial sector. Is that right?
Correct.
And so residential folks are, seem to be very happy, and that wasn't just about rates. And I'm wondering if the commercial, is there any indication that they're worried, concerned, unhappy with the rates or the service, the commercial sector?
I wouldn't say that I get any more complaints from the commercial sector than I do from the residential sector.
So I'm wondering if it maybe makes sense to kind of put a watch on it? Or are you feeling strongly that you want to go out and do an RFP now?
Well, I had, I had also noticed in the survey that they had trouble reaching those commercial. I think that there were some multifamily residents that were reached for the survey, but especially for businesses. This also applies to business, correct?
Correct.
So I would think that having the highest rate for businesses, it would be good to see what they think of the rates, because the, the single-family homes said that cost was less of a concern, but they also have the lowest cost. So whereas we have the highest cost for the commercial, so I would, I would like to see an effort to actually ascertain whether they are happy at the same level, because we do have a lot of data that, that does strongly support that the single-family and that, that residents are happy with their rates and with the service, and then very little data for this other group, which is also an important group.
Yeah, point taken, and I just want to clarify that the overall, I think in what Michael was trying to show, is that the contract value overall is competitive and really the distinction between the single-family and commercial multifamily is more a function about rate design and overall contract, how the costs are allocated in the contract. So going out to bid wouldn't necessarily cure that situation. It's more of a internal policy about rates and allocation of costs. It's, it is very much an artifact of how rates have been structured for a long, long time, and that's because of a reticence to have a price shock to one sector or another, because as you go from one set of rates or one contract to the next contract, if it was purely, if you tried to correct it too much, you might would see a really dramatic increase on rates for the single-family sector for a small change in rates on the commercial sector. But, you know, so I think that's the point about kind of long-term shifting of this, that balance. It's, it's, in some respects, it's irrespective of going out to bid or not.
So how are you as far as this motion for this two years?
I think two years is a relatively short period of time. Often, the contracts they point out are more on the timeframe of seven years, and so in two years, I think that there is data to support that the service overall is at approximately the middle, if you look at the overall data that was provided in terms of, of the cost. And so I am, I am okay with, with the the two-year extension. I do, however, I would, however, want to see evidence of how the businesses are, because I think that's missing from this survey, and that's also potentially a group that would want to give some feedback about the rates that they're seeing.
So is that something that can be watched in the next two years through all of this, and then we'd have more information at that point in time?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I guess, have you, you mentioned that you get complaints at approximately the same rates from the, the businesses as from the, the single-family. Is, is there any difference in the content of the complaints in terms of more complaints about cost for the businesses?
No, most of the complaints I get are about occasional service issues or missed pickup, things like that. So it's not centered around cost.
I appreciated the explanation on the linear cost of those, because as, similar with our water rates, the city tends to encourage conservation by payment or increase thereof, right? So our, our water rates go up quite a bit as you become a larger user and incentive to, to do that better. And I, I love the fact that it sounds like both the city and Recology would be pushing that composting issue on the, on those larger users, because that's the thing that often gets lost, because you have the big container and people just start throwing things in there, right? So that separation issue gets a little more difficult there, and if we can, if you can do that, that would probably be great. I know my garbage has gone way down since I've started doing that to almost nothing. And so I'm hoping those, those folks can get smaller containers as well as we continue to push on that conservation side.
And in addition, the other commercial incentive that we have in place, besides the linear rate structure, is our city offers 200% of the volume of recycling embedded for the cost of your garbage service. So you can have, if you have a four-yard garbage container, you can have an eight-yard recycling container at no additional cost. In some cities, that rate is 150%, and some it's 100%. So we have a high incentive to encourage recycling to businesses. It has the opportunity to save them quite a bit of money.
I also like some of the items that are in the, included in the amendment. The lending library sounds super, so I'll be interested in hearing more about that. And the other items on the list, I think, are positive as well.
Yes, I agree with that, and I do like the store, and I like the fact that I can take things that can't get recycled normally other places. I can't put them in a can, but I can take big Styrofoam and, and those kinds, and batteries and those kinds of things to, and drop them off there and get them recycled. So it adds another place to, to get recycling done easily. That's, that's another service that I like of this company. So am I hearing a 3-0 recommendation to do the two-year contract extension at this point? And, and with a caveat to watch the commercial and do some, some talking with and watch, checking with commercial, the multifamily users over the next couple of years and see how that, if we gather any more information with that. Does that sound reasonable?
Within all those in favor? With a motion?
If you want, we usually just, by agreement, but if you, the motion was there, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three to O to send it forward with the administration's recommendation. Now, when are we looking at doing that and what? So this is March 5th. And to the full council, March 5th, are we enough with consent, or you want this to go with everybody? On the consent calendar or on general business?
I would like to put it on regular business, just to bring up that I have, the concern that I spoke to about the commercial.
Good, excellent. So March 5th, regular business. And I, I think it's good, because this is an important thing to our citizens. I mean, it's something they pay every month, and, and to highlight it, I think, is fine. To get a feeling that they, you know, what the rates are, what their services are, highlight those things, I think, because they're going to be, they've been having it, and they're going to be with it for a while, so if they have the opportunity to have more information. A particular thing that you mentioned is clean containers. I didn't know that myself. So something to advertise that to people and say, "Hey, my compost container is really stinky. I need a clean one." Advertise that program, because I didn't know that, and I'm going to take advantage of it. Next week, I'm going to call them.
So maybe a very mini presentation at the council meeting, so we don't have a duplicate of a committee meeting?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but show the good information and the questionable, the questions we had too. Cool, thank you all very much. All right, next up, we have the Transportation Manager Kurt Seaman with the Complete Streets Policy Code Update. This is informational as well. All right, Kurt, you're up.
Thank you very much. Very happy to be back to talk to you tonight about several things, starting off with the Complete Streets Ordinance. I'm Kurt Seaman, Transportation Manager here at the city. And we've talked about this with council a bit before, and now we're moving forward with actually preparing to come to council and back to committee and then on to council for final approval of what we're calling a Complete Streets Ordinance. There's a lot of benefits to a Complete Streets Ordinance, which I'm going to talk about a little bit here. Fairly high level. Don't have a presentation, just want to get you thinking about what this is and, and the value of it to the city. A complete, complete streets policy, let's start with a complete streets policy, and why is that important? It's, it's not just a checklist that we check the boxes and doesn't really mean much, but it's really, it can be, it can be an important way of thinking about our transportation network. A good policy integrates people in place in the planning and design and in the construction and operation and the maintenance of our transportation system. And it's fundamentally rethinking how we think about different modes of travel. So often, when we're planning, we talk about walking or biking or transit or cars or buses or trucks. And this is a, fundamentally, it's, it's a multimodal, integrated approach to talking about transportation, which is really, really great. I mean, it really is the way I like to think about transportation. Bless you. And really important, and it's, it's, it's the way that most progressive communities throughout the country are thinking about their transportation system, and I'd like to think that we're in that category. So if we do this right, Complete Streets not only make the streets safer and more convenient, but it's, it's for everyone. It's no matter how old you are, what race, ethnicity, income, physical ability, or how you choose to travel, they're truly streets that benefit the entire community. So the great news is there's a couple of organizations, Smart Growth America and the National Complete Streets Coalition, and they have actually done an inventory of hundreds or possibly thousands of cities across the country and identified what the best Complete Streets policies, what elements are in the best Complete Streets policies. So, and actually, they scored the various communities, and I've been looking at some of the Complete Streets policies from some of the, some of the top communities. One's Wenatchee here in Washington, and then there's quite a few back east, quite a few Massachusetts, actually. But what they all have in common are these 10 elements, which I'd like to just briefly go over with you. And so we can start thinking about what a good, robust Complete Streets policy needs to address. And first and foremost, it's about vision. It's why we want to do, why we want to do this, why we want Complete Streets. And typically, the reasons are we want to improve safety, we want to promote health. If we have stronger non-motorized systems where people are more likely to bike or walk or travel in other ways other than their car. So again, back to my first point about it not being a checklist, a great Complete Streets policy is, can be very inspirational, it can be very inspirational, it can be very aspirational of where we want to be with our street system. I mentioned a moment ago, a really important element of complete streets is all users in all modes. So it's not, it's not giving a, it's, it's not giving a preference to any one mode, but incorporating all of those in a, in a multimodal global type of approach. And importantly, it applies to, a good policy applies to all projects in all phases. So whether we're talking about design or planning or construction, maintenance, either new or existing street facilities, all of those streets, all of those projects would be subject to the same guidelines. There needs to be clear accountable exceptions. So, so an exception would be, so why aren't you putting a bike lane on this roadway? And so an exception, exceptions need to be fairly rare, but very clear why we would not do that. And the reason in that case could be, I know we talked about right here on East Sunset, not putting bike lanes on East Sunset, but putting them on the adjacent parallel streets. So that would be an exception potentially, but it would have a clear reason and an equivalent project that would serve the same purpose. So it, I think one thing that's, to me is very important about a complete streets policy is that it's integrated for all modes of travel. So, you know, oftentimes we certainly have this happen here in Issaquah. And it's something that we have a ways to, to go to work on, but sidewalks end or the, or the bike system is not integrated, it's not complete. It's not, doesn't work together. So a complete streets policy declares that you'll strive for an integrated network for all your modes of travel. Another element is a good policy is, makes it very clear to other jurisdictions what complete streets mean to Issaquah. So if you're coming in here as the state or the county or metro, sound transit, we'll have our policy. Here's how we think about complete streets. Here's what our expectations are for you to follow those when you work with us. Of course, we'll want to make use of the best latest design criteria. One source that we often use that's, that's fairly progressive in my opinion is the NACTO, which is the National Association of City Transportation Officials. And so because with any design criteria, you also need to have the latest ideas about where design flexibility is, is important and can be used. Complete streets and, almost done with the list here, but the, the complete streets need to be sensitive to land use and the community needs. So it's, it's, it's not streets and land use and community and separate places. That's an integrated system and they all need to work together. And finally, a couple of last things, it needs to have performance measures to be a good policy. So that could include things like, we could keep track of this each year. How many linear feet of new sidewalk or repaired sidewalk have we completed? How many total miles of new bike lanes? How many new or repaired curb ramps, for example? And then finally, the policy needs to have specific implementation steps on how we will get from where we are now to the policy. So that could include things like revising and restructuring our current policies, developing new design policies, training to staff, community leaders and the public. And again, as I just mentioned, developing better ways to measure performance. So it's our commitment to you that this policy that we bring forward will address comprehensively all the 10 elements that I mentioned. We feel that those, we agree with the national standards that those are important and we feel that they're easy to incorporate into a policy that we, that supports where we want to go here in Issaquah. So that's my 50,000-foot high-level overview on a complete streets policy. We expect to, next steps, we expect to bring the policy to the council spring of this year. That would get referred to committee. I think preliminary, we're targeting for a May CIC discussion with you all. That would then go back for the ordinance. All it would actually be adopted, I believe, as an ordinance by the council probably in June. And then the, the most important part, implementing it. So that's, that's my overview on complete streets. I'd be happy to hear any of your comments or questions, discussion.
Thank you. I am wondering, is this, is this replacing existing policy or is this a, a new policy that adds to our existing policy? I'm unclear on exactly how this fits in with the code that we already have, especially because as you were talking about those components of the complete street policy, it seems that the code should strive to meet those, those goals. And so we ideally would, ideally our existing code would also meet, at least to some degree, those goals.
So that's an excellent question I've asked. Sheldon is going to pull up what we have now. It's very, it's very low. It's section, it's, this is our municipal code. So it's section 12.10.010. And it's, honestly, we can get you a copy of this or you can look at it for yourself in the Issaquah municipal code. But it's, it's just, it's literally just a couple of sentences. Bicycle, I can read it to you. Bicycle pedestrian facilities shall be included in the planning, engineering, design and construction of transportation facilities, including transportation plans and programs. And so that's it. That's where we're starting from. And so we feel that we need something a bit more robust than that, which is the, the 10 points that I mentioned. So it's really good, I think, for us to be purposeful and clear and as direct as we can on these elements so that everyone, the community, developers, other jurisdictions, and most important, us, all know what we're doing here.
And so this would replace?
So, yes. The intent here is to replace the current code and make it stronger and more direct about how we're going to achieve the complete streets within the city, as Kurt mentioned. It's a code replacement.
Any comments?
My comment is, I'm super excited about it. I think the last two months I was on CIC before, we talked about this. So that's been two years?
A year, I think.
Has it been only, has it been a year?
Year.
13, 14 months. Okay. Yay. I'm glad.
I, I think that the points that you outlined are very important to include in the code. And so I also support this. I, as a, as a new person serving on the committee though, I, I would just request that in the future I be provided with some background information and also probably for the public who is interested in following this. If, I don't think it needs to be very extensive, but that would help probably the public also if they wanted to see what this agenda item was about. Some, some background, one slide probably even could have done it with the existing code and saying we're replacing it with this additional code. So I would greatly appreciate that.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay. I think time for public comment. Go ahead, Connie.
Hi.
Microphone.
For doing where I am.
Yeah, can you email it to me? Because I don't know what you're talking about. I came over here to try to catch it and I walked in right at the end of it. So.
I would be happy. I'll, I'll provide this both to the council, my notes here. And it's just a couple of pages I can certainly.
I'm assuming it's going to become an agenda bill that then goes for a code change later in the year. Yeah.
Right. So the plan, Connie, is to, this was meant to just be a, a quick overview of where we're headed on this. The plan would be that this would go as an agenda bill to council, referred back to the committee in May for discussion and then back to council for approval. So yes. And we'll of course have materials for all of that.
Right.
And yes, I can, I could be happy to share my notes on this with you and, and council. It's just a couple of, couple of bullet points, couple of pages, but of course.
So then my comments on the unknown thing are, when we talked about it a year ago, it seemed like complete streets were sort of being taken out of the funding pool and that there was not going to be a dedicated funding pool any longer to fill the gaps of existing infrastructure. And that was the origination of complete streets. And a year ago, I was worried that that was just going to fall off the face of the earth and not be a list that comes out to be approved every year with the funding source. And because I don't know if that's changed, I say it again.
Kurt, could you please do a quick history on there on the confusion?
I'll give it a try. You bet. So there's, it's, there's a couple of things going on here. There is a, a program, a list, a list of projects called Complete Streets, which we've had for some time. And those are smaller projects that generally were of non-motorized nature, filled in the gaps, that kind of thing. That program is no longer being funded, my understanding, as a complete streets program or, or list of projects. Rather, those projects are getting rolled into our overall transportation project list. So there aren't, there's not a separate complete streets program or project list as it stands now. And I, and you can, council can certainly jump in here and, and add to that. So, and so, but to be clear, it's a little confusing because we had this, these, these projects, this program called Complete Streets, which built smaller projects. This, what we're talking about is something happens to have the same name, so it's confusing. But this is a policy, it's an ordinance that will guide how we view our streets going forward. So there, although they have the same name, we're talking about two different things.
So, so I'll add to that. We're trying to clean up that confusion. So we're trying to get to the words of complete streets means the policy and how we look at our streets and, and our city as a whole and turn that into an overall policy. The actual projects of where we fill in gaps and so forth, we're not going to use that name because that gets confusing. So what, those projects will still be there. We'll still be doing them. They'll be part of our project list in our, in our plans for the year.
Our capital projects.
Yeah, capital, yeah, projects. And so they'll be still, you know, adding those places where we are missing sidewalk or, you know, or bike lanes or whatever. And so those projects aren't going away. They're just going to be under the overall program so we can separate the confusion. Because before you say complete streets and you didn't know if you're talking about a specific project or our overall policy in the city. So we're trying to get away from that mix. Does that make some sense? All right. So this is kind of information now. You're going to get a little more on it because you just want to get us updated and let us know that you are working on it now. We've kind of taken a little while to get here, as, as you mentioned. But now we have a schedule and we can be seeing this coming to get a, something in the ordinance side.
Correct.
Can we go with this? David, do you have a comment?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Good. Kurt, you get to stay here. Our next item is traffic calming Old Town Issaquah Highland and Highlands. Again, informational. And John is going to join us as well. John Mortensen.
Thank you. Yes, we're really excited to be here tonight to give you all, you, council and the community, an update on where we are on two important traffic calming projects in the city. One in Old Town, where we are actually installing devices in the street as part of a pilot program. And then Highlands, where we've recently had a meeting and come out of that with a, a bunch of work, a bunch of project, or a bunch of items, traffic calming items that we're going to be addressing. We're working closely with the Highlands community to implement those this spring. So John has the latest updates for both of those efforts, both in Old Town and Highlands. And he's got about a dozen or so slides. So he can walk you through that. He's been working hard in both these communities to implement these programs. So with that, I'd like to introduce John Mortensen, our Senior Traffic Engineer.
All right. As Kurt said, I've got a few slides to give you all an update on what we're doing for traffic calming in Old Town and up in the Highlands. So we'll start first with Old Town. And what we have going on in Old Town is a pilot program where we are, we have installed some temporary traffic calming devices and we're seeing how they work and how the neighborhood likes them. And then from that devising a plan for the future. So it all began last, or I guess it began when council funded the project. But then the next major step that happened after that was last August, we had a public meeting with the neighborhood where we received feedback on what their concerns were, where they felt like they were speeding in their neighborhood and cut through traffic where people were trying to avoid traffic on Sunset and driving through their neighborhood. And we then took that information and put together a design to try and calm traffic and reduce cut-through traffic in the neighborhood. And then we, once we had that design put together, we met with the neighborhood on January 6th. We walked through the, the project. And then on January 16th, we went out with the contractor, started laying out the devices, brought in east side fire and rescue, making sure that they'd be able to drive their fire engines through there. And then on the 25th, they started putting the actual devices on the ground of January, that is. And so right now, we're in the middle of our 10-week trial period where we're collecting data from the neighborhood and the speed counts. And then our plan is to come back to the, this committee in May and make our final recommendations for what to do in the neighborhood for traffic calming. As I mentioned, we had a walkabout on January 6th. And I was pretty amazed that we had 52 people who got up on a Saturday morning to attend. We started out at the trail house and walked the neighborhood. We went to the different locations where the devices will be installed. So we've got a number of devices which I listed up there. Speed humps are what you typically think of when you think of traffic calming. The speed table is basically a speed hump with a flat top in the middle. A speed cushion is a speed hump with openings for fire engine and other emergency vehicles to drive through without going up. And we've got chicanes which divert traffic. So it basically makes a lane shift to slow people down. And traffic circles, which if you ever are in a neighborhood in Seattle, you'll see lots of traffic circles. They, basically a circle in the middle of an intersection to try and slow vehicles down. The walkabout was really well received by the, the public. And I really feel like the neighborhood was happy that we were doing something about it. We've got a couple of pictures here of the contractor installing the devices. The, one of the pictures, the picture on your left, that's a speed cushion that was going in, I believe, on Alder. And so these are made out of rubber and they piece together. So once we're done with our pilot program and we make a final recommendation for the neighborhood, we have the opportunity to reuse the same material elsewhere in the city if we want to try another pilot program out or if there's a neighborhood that would like some traffic calming. And then on the right, that's a traffic circle that's getting put in on Bush. And the way we designed the traffic circles, they're meant to be removable. If you notice the plastic sheeting that's underneath the concrete, that's, so that way, once we're done with it, we're not going to leave a stain from the ring of the concrete. And now that all the devices are installed, we're in the process of collecting data. And so we've got traffic counters out there collecting speed and volume datas. And so this graph here is what we've been collecting at southeast Bush Street. And so there are traffic tubes right next to that bump sign right there. And so the, the speeds, the original speeds, they were closer to 30 miles per hour. And once we installed the traffic calming devices, they instantly dropped down between 20 and 25 miles an hour, depending on which direction you're going. This is, I believe, the most extreme example, the data that we have at Andrews. And Alder show about a five mile an hour drop in the speed. And so far we're, that's the speed results that we're getting. And as I mentioned, one of the key components of this is to get input from the public. So there's a variety of ways to do this. One of the ways is to go to the Old Town website at the, for the city of Issaquah. One of the ways is to go to the Old Town website that the City of Isqwa has, and then you click on "traffic calming measures," and then down at the bottom, there's a link to take a survey, which takes you to Peak Democracy, that's a webpage we set up. And the picture I have there is what it looks like when you go to our survey. And so encouraging people to provide comments. At the same time, we're also getting feedback other ways. I've been getting a lot of emails from people, or people giving their input and thoughts. I also spent some time talking to the contractor who was out installing the devices, and he said that a lot of people like to come up to him and tell him their thoughts. And he said overall, the neighborhood really loves it. He said that the favorite device are the speed humps, and the least popular in this anecdotal are the chicanes, that people are concerned about parking, and they feel like it's just an obstacle for young people to drive around. So that's where we're at with getting the public input at this point. And so for our Old Town traffic calming, the next steps include covering the no-left-turn signs that are on Sunset. We're tentatively shooting for March 12th. So a little bit of history on that. So sometime in the past, there was an effort to do traffic calming in Old Town. And what ended up happening, out of all the things that were talked about, were to put up no-left-turn signs to discourage cut-through traffic. So as we started talking about this pilot program, we were talking about, do we try and remove those signs and hope that the traffic calming devices will discourage cut-through traffic, or do we keep them up? And the neighborhood had lots of strong feelings both ways. And so what we end up doing for the solution was to try and test it out first with the signs still up, so there's no left turns from Sunset into the neighborhood. And then collect the data. And then about halfway through the pilot program, cover the signs, and then see if we end up getting an increase in traffic, see if more people are cutting through, or if people who live in the neighborhood are no longer breaking the law, if they want to just turn onto their street to get to their home. And I'm hoping that the end results will be that we'll be able to calm traffic and people won't have to break the law to turn left into their neighborhood. We're also going to continue collecting traffic data and feedback from the neighborhood. We're going to leave the traffic tubes out there the whole time during the pilot program so we get a good feeling for the traffic volumes and the speeds. I think probably the most important component is the input from the public, since they're the ones who live there and know what it feels like to live on the street and to feel safe with cars going slower, hopefully. Plan to reach out to operations and talk about what we've installed and how it impacts their maintenance for the neighborhood, and Eastside Fire and Rescue, and how what we've installed impacts their ability to provide EMS services for the neighborhood. And then in April, the plan is to return to this committee and give an update on preliminary, what we're finding, and then come back in May with our final recommendations. Transitioning here to what we're working on up in the Isqwa Highlands. So for the Isqwa Highlands, we held a couple of public meetings, one in July and one in January, where we got a lot of information about what's important to the neighborhood and what their concerns are. And so out of the July meeting, we partnered with the Highlands to do an awareness campaign and a pledge for driving safe. We installed a few pavement markings to try and, 25 mile an hour pavement markings to help remind people of what the speed limit is on 24th and 25th up there. And also some arrows to try and help people not make wrong-way turns in the area of Park and Federal. And so after our January meeting, we got a number of additional items that the neighborhood really wanted us to focus on and work on. So we created a list of what we called "next steps" for Isqwa Highlands. And with the plan to complete the items on our next steps before our meeting in May, that way, when we go back to the public, we can say, here were your concerns, and here's how we've addressed them. And in the meantime, we've also launched a webpage and another survey with Peak Democracy. That way, we can continue the conversation with the neighborhood. We are working on implementing a lot of the next steps. We plan to collect some additional traffic speed data for the Highlands, although a lot of that will kind of depend on traffic counter availability, since a lot of them are busy in Old Town right now. And we have a meeting with the neighborhood scheduled on May 15th, where, as I mentioned, we're going to talk about how we've completed the items that we said we would complete. So on that list of next steps, a number of items that we're working towards. One of the big concerns that the neighborhood has is pedestrian safety. So we're partnering with IHCA to install pedestrian flags, like what you see in Kirkland. And so those are going to go in near the school and near the fire station park, and another location, I believe at High, and I can't remember exactly. But we're also working on education for parking, that one of the concerns that people who live up in the Highlands had, where people were parking in front of fire hydrants and in disabled parking stalls. And near the fire station, there is a merge that has caused a lot of concern with people. So we're working on revising the channelization to try and improve that. The plan is to merge traffic a little bit further down the hill. That way, everyone's in one line when it's time to look at the crosswalk for the pedestrians. And at Discovery and Highlands Drive and up near Big Fish, there are two no-right-turn-on-red signs that a lot of people are not obeying, and I'm going to go back a slide. And as you can see, that minivan is making a right turn on red, and this is one of the no-right-turn-on-red. And so we're going to, we have a no-right-turn-on-red sign. We're going to put an additional sign where that fire hydrant is. And I'd also like to put a "stop here on red" sign, because what this minivan did is, they thought they could make a right turn on red. They stopped, but they didn't stop on the loop detector, they stopped in the middle of the crosswalk. And I sat there watching as they went through about three or four different cycles and never got a green to go until they finally ran the red light. So I want to try and get cars to stop back at the stop bar, not try and make a right turn on red. That way, they'll activate the signal and they'll be able to safely make the right turn.
Is that a no right?
Oh, yes.
Is that a no right on red because of the traffic coming up the hill? And it's not?
Right. There's not enough sight distance to safely make it. We also plan on purchasing some portable radar speed signs that we'll be able to use throughout the city, and we're going to start out by putting them in the Highlands. And we're working to add some additional signs to reduce the wrong-way turns that we have in the, mostly in the area of Park and Federal. And as I mentioned, we're going to meet with the neighborhood on May 15th. And with that, are there any comments or questions?
What do you, tell me about the May 15th meeting. And what you envision that meeting to be about substantively, because there was the July meeting, and then there was the January meeting, which was, there were not a lot of happy neighborhood folks there because of the time it took for the city to circle back around and the number of items that had not been addressed since the July meeting. So can you tell me what the neighborhood can expect at the May 15th meeting?
Yes. So out of the meeting in January, we combined every comment that we had received at both meetings onto a master list, which we emailed out to HCA, IHCA, and everyone who had signed in to the January meeting. And we, basically it was a table that said what the issue was, what our resolution, or basically what we're going to do about it, and when we're going to get it done. And the purpose of the May meeting, the agenda is basically going to be that list. And our intention is to go item by item and to say, this is what we heard you say, and this is what we did. And that way, the frustrations of not getting things done, our intention is to change that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I have a few questions. So one is about the traffic calming sign on the traffic calming study in Old Town. I think that in a previous meeting, it was discussed how many people actually are familiar with the term "traffic calming." I was not familiar with it previously. And so I'm wondering about the impact of that sign, and if you have any feedback on whether people know what it means. And also, if that sign by itself, do you think that that sign is influencing behavior? Because I would imagine that if people know that they're entering a study area, they might, that might also influence their behavior instead of being influenced by the traffic obstacles or traffic calming devices.
So I guess the first question is, the term "traffic calming." And I've spent a lot of time talking to our communications team, because that was one of my concerns. And it was their recommendation to use the wording that we used. But that was something we were very concerned, that people would not understand what that means. My thought is that the people in the neighborhood, they've been so involved, the fact we had 52 people show up, that by now, they probably know traffic, what traffic calming means more than any other neighborhood in the area. As for the people who don't live in the neighborhood, I'm not 100% sure how much impact that would have on them. I'm hoping that the sign, along with the series of devices, will discourage people where maybe someone will turn into the neighborhood one time, and they'll go through a bunch of speed humps and circles and chicanes, and they'll never want to do it again, and they'll see the sign, and it'll draw an association with them, and they'll avoid the neighborhood the next time around.
So if I could elaborate a little further, those signs are meant to essentially introduce the driver that there's a change that's happening in the neighborhood, right? Driver behavior, speeds, things like that, are really influenced more by the conditions along the roadway and alongside the roadway than it is about an entry sign that's saying, hey, you're entering a traffic calming area. So I would say that those signs do not have an effect on the driver behavior. It's really the conditions by which they're driving through that's going to affect their behavior.
And just to add to that, so again, this is a pilot program. We're trying out some different things here, trying out some different devices, some different signage. We have Peak Democracy, where we're getting information from the community. We're getting a lot of information both through the Peak Democracy and in the other ways that John mentioned, from anywhere from our contractors, people emailing us and phoning us and giving us their ideas. So the point being, when this is, when this pilot program's complete in April, and when we come back to you in May, we're going to have, we've summarized everything we've heard, and along with the speed data and the volume data. And we're going to come back with a proposal. We're going to synthesize that information and say, here's what we see this meaning, and here's our recommendations going forward. So it's not, you know, to be honest, it's not this, it's not a super-high-level scientific approach to traffic calming. It's a pilot program where we thought we would try to do something in the neighborhood and see how it works. So I think we'll all learn together on what, how this works or doesn't. But I do think we'll be able to come back to you all here later this spring with some valuable recommendations as far as permanent installations we may want to do in Old Town that I think will have some lasting impact. So I think it's, I think there's a lot of value to it, and we're learning a great deal as we go along.
One more question. Is this information available anywhere? Especially, I think, the information, the graph, I realize it's preliminary, and you made it public at this meeting, but I'm wondering if this presentation would be available, because I think it might be of interest, especially that nice graph showing the drop in speed when you go down Bush Street.
So first answer about the traffic data. The intention is to get all that information onto the website that we have for the traffic calming pilot program. And we just haven't finished it yet. Been in the process of organizing the data, and then talking to our communication team about how best to present the data. And so they're actually in the process right now of trying to find similar-type things that other cities have put on the web. That way, we can get an idea on how to present the data. So yes, we will be presenting the data. And as for putting the presentation on the web, I'm more than willing to.
I think we can do that.
Yeah.
We'll make the presentation available.
It seems like it would, I just went on the website and found the "for residents" tab and under "traffic calming," and it shows the two pages. It seems like the materials that we had tonight, that were just presented at the meeting, it could be a link on there that said that this was the information that was presented at the Infrastructure Committee meeting tonight.
We can do that, we easily do that.
Yeah. And then it probably should be added to the packet, so that when people click on it, even if it wasn't originally in the packet, it should be there for historical reasons.
And I have one comment. So I did have that comment about this particular presentation not being there, also because I'm new. And again, I would like to have some more information about the different items. But I do think, overall, this is a really good example of going out to the community. You mentioned 52 people came out to this walk. It's something that directly impacts the people in the area because it's a traffic, you know, a traffic device right in front of their homes potentially. And so I think it's a good example of something that influences their daily lives, and also something that people have really responded to, the outreach efforts and good outreach efforts.
My thoughts, again, just some anecdotal things. I haven't heard a lot from the neighborhood in Old Town, as being there, but most of I've heard is good. And what has interested me is you did show the graph, and I know these numbers are changing because this data is being collected as we speak right now, right? So it's kind of hard to say, here's the data, because it may change, right? But generally, you're looking at, you said like, it looked like about a five to eight mile an hour reduction depending upon the street is kind of a trend you're showing. What you didn't show along with that was the volumes at all. So is there any reduction in volumes at all that you're seeing yet, or can you say?
I can't say at this point. The one thing I did notice is our original data was taken before the traffic signal at Second and Sunset. And I did notice a drop in volume from before that signal was installed to after that signal was installed, but before our traffic calming devices were installed. And so I've got to spend a little bit more time studying that data, but, so I don't have a good answer on that, other than it looks like installing that traffic signal did reduce the cut-through traffic.
And then, and with that, you did have the counters up for a little while before the devices started going in too. So I don't know if there was enough days of data to tell there at all. And I guess I just saw them out there today, just putting the reflector paint on all those things so it can really be obvious, because at nighttime, those new things don't show unless you've got that. So thanks for getting all that on. You have something else? No. And then the other question I had then was with the Highlands. You said your next meeting in May would, I felt like there was a piece missing, I'm sure you have it, but you said you're going to take those issues they had, say, here's what we did.
Yes.
And the piece missing is, okay, now what do you think of, you know, what's the input now? We've made some changes. Is this a little bit? Is it enough? Is it, what's the next step is what I didn't hear. So I'm assuming that's going to be part of that meeting as well, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And if I could just add one point to that, Bill, is we have started meeting with the Highlands Association monthly, first of the month. We're meeting again first week in March. So we've had, we've done that once so far, this will be our second one coming up. And my plan is to continue doing that, having that kind of
And my plan is to continue doing that, having that kind of interaction with the Highlands community as long as it's useful. So it's not my intent that we're going anywhere after, that May is the end of this conversation. May is the next check-in point, but I think we all agree that it's important to continue that conversation with the Highlands going forward. So absolutely, the May meeting will be both a chance for us to share what we've done and hear additional input from the community.
And then Old Town would be very interesting to see that change in data when the left-turn signs get changed, particularly with the volume. I imagine the speeds won't change a lot, but the volumes may. So thank you for that. Are we good? Public comment? There's an Old Town resident in the gallery here.
I must say, the January 6 meeting was really good. Good attendance and just how it was presented. There was a real nice little handout, little booklet kind of handout showing where all the things were proposed to be. They were great listening to the community. We had the fire department along, and the mayor was there for a bit. Paul Winterstein was there for the whole time, and it was real positive, real positive. And thank you. This kind of gets right to the problem we got in those old streets. The street's often higher than the sidewalks, if we have sidewalks. And that's, you know, what do you do? You've got the driveways and the sidewalks from people's homes all coming out to meet the existing sidewalk. Do you take out two or three layers of asphalt, go down and put a lower street in, or we just live with what we've got, which I imagine is how it's going to be for quite a long time? But that does complicate things, because you don't have curbs in a lot of cases. And I know you've kind of got some temporary, for the traffic circles, only work if there's a curb on your right side. So you don't want to just cut off under the sidewalk or under the parking strip there. So that's something being worked on. But I think the chicanes are seen as, if nobody else is on the road and you're all alone, it's a slalom course to the Olympics. But I think they really work. If there's people, oncoming traffic, people slow down. But I think my neighbors kind of think that the kids like going through there if they can. So that might be the least effective. That also complicates parking, because if you park right there where that is, you've got to be able to get out without driving over the curb. So it's been a little of an issue there. One thing, I guess, and I wasn't there, a gal's going around the neighborhood saying they would like to have the flashing yellow lights on Second Avenue, which isn't related to this, it's related to the signal. As people are northbound on Second Avenue, coming down from like the Episcopal Church there, they see the green light. It was before, from two or three blocks away, they knew there was going to be a stop sign. But they get in a real rush on Second, and then there's some issues there with how cars are parked with a very narrow parking strip, where you can't park. Many regular cars cannot park in that. They stick out into the white line, and when you're at the crosswalk, you have to kind of venture out, and the cars are going fast. So there needs to maybe be some restrictions on parking on Second as a starting point, so they can actually see the oncoming traffic, and they can see the pedestrians. And East Sunset's starting to make a lot of noise, because of the trucks, maybe last summer, those 19, 20 concrete panels are shifting, you know? And they stopped doing that at one point when they repaved it, but now it's back to that same thing. But that's the way it is. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I was sort of haunting the website, waiting for the stuff to come up, and it didn't come up as quickly as I expected. But this is probably more communications and less you all. You feed them the data, and then they're responsible for shoving it out. And I think that's sort of where the failure is in this situation, because you go on the website, and it's not on the front page. You have to go into major projects, and then you have to go to Old Town, as I recall. Yeah? Go ahead, you can look. And then, now you go to the survey. So I tried going to the survey, and the survey is very complex. I noticed people's answers, basically, they take the first bubble and they talk. So I think lessons learned is just give them a paragraph and ask them what they're thinking and describe it, and just use it as a word collection tool. One of the things that didn't get put on the map was where the traffic counts were going to be, so that people can understand, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, this is where we're taking the counts and the speeds, right? And unfortunately, you would promise them that they would be able to watch all those counts and speeds as time went on. So a paragraph updating the neighborhood, saying, "Hey, we know we were going to give you those, we're working on it, don't get grumpy." And then, "I see no one from the neighborhood here." So I'm wondering if there was a push-out to the neighborhood, saying, "Okay, we're having our first review, and you come and tell us what you're thinking and how it's working." Because I didn't get an email from Jenny asking me if I was coming to the meeting, which makes me think if Jenny doesn't know, then Bill knows, but that's the only one who might know. So, "Oh, Dave only came because we came from the meeting across the street, and he says, 'What's going on over there?'" So I love the project, I love the concept. Somehow, we have to get the communications part to be seamless when we have these things. One of the things that's, for the Isqwa Highlands, is, is it possible for Nina to give you a clip in her newsletter that she puts out all the time discussing the project that you're working on now? So they start understanding, they don't have to wait till May, they can know every couple of weeks, "Hey, we're making progress, we heard you, we heard you, we heard you," right? And so that helps them, bring them along, that you all are listening, and the city is not out to get them and kill their children. Okay.
Thank you, Connie.
Yeah, I just want to echo that, although I was able to accidentally find my way to the websites, the webpages there, it's not easy, it's not intuitive to find them. And if you're trying to involve the community right now, and it's important that the community involves, is involved, and gives you feedback during this 10 weeks, then we're not doing a very good job of making sure that we get that. It's not on the front page, you have to go to the second page, then you have to scroll down, and you have to look for it. And that's only if you know what's there. Otherwise, you have no idea what's going on.
So that's good input. We'll follow up with our communications team to see how we can improve that.
All right. We are good with this one? A little bit, the next one, I'm going to introduce Kurt on that. It's the roundabout demonstration video, informational again.
No, I was going to ask for somebody for the purpose of a demonstration video.
Yeah, I'm going to tell you that. So in just my goingabouts and talking to folks and seeing things and realizing that in our community, we have gotten quite a few roundabouts lately. In my discussions, I've had many people tell me that they are upset with the way people don't know how to drive around roundabouts. And many of them told me how they drive around roundabouts, and it's the right way. And every time they've told me that, it's always been different. So I've seen a lot of people thinking they know the way to do it, and they're upset with other folks. So I just thought it was an educational thing to get something here and say, "What's the legal way to drive around a roundabout?" And maybe help a little bit. So I thought we'd just put this on here, because we have quite a few now, and we're maybe getting more in traffic circles and so on and so forth as well. So that's why this came about.
So that's perfect. And this is about a four- or five-minute video from Missouri, I believe, and it's fairly generic. It talks both about driving roundabouts and also just briefly why it makes sense to install them and what the benefits of a roundabout is. So give you a little idea about roundabouts, a short tutorial of roundabouts.
Intersections across Missouri are changing to give motorists a safe, clog-free drive while saving taxpayer money, too. These circular intersections are called roundabouts, and they're designed to safely get a lot of traffic through an intersection without much waiting. Let's start with how a roundabout is different from a traditional traffic signal intersection. Instead of red, yellow, and green lights for drivers to follow, a roundabout is a one-way circle of traffic with yield signs at each entry point. An entry point is where a driver will yield into a roundabout, which allows flowing traffic with little to no stopping. They're easy to navigate through, and more importantly, safer to use than traditional traffic signal intersections. A study by the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety says, "Roundabouts reduce collisions of all types by 39%, injury collisions by 76%, with fatal and incapacitating collisions down by 89%. Pedestrians are safer, too. People are 50% less likely to get hit at a roundabout than at a common signalized crosswalk. Reasons for these safety improvements for both motorists and pedestrians include slower traffic speeds, smaller collision angles, and fewer conflict points." For example, a typical intersection has 20 to 30 conflict points or spots where vehicles could collide. Roundabouts reduce this number to eight. Using a roundabout is simple, and so let's get through one together. When approaching a roundabout, you will see a dashed white line and a yield sign at each entry point. Slow down, signal, look for oncoming cars, pedestrians, and bicyclists. And then, when you see a safe opening for you and your car, proceed into the roundabout. Just follow the circle of traffic until you see the road you want to continue on, and then exit, which will remove you from the roundabout. It's important to know that all roundabouts work the same, but they may not look the same. Some offer single-lane traffic, while others may have two lanes for drivers. Also, most roundabouts are designed with a truck apron to accommodate large vehicles like school buses, semi-trucks, or farm equipment. This raised section of pavement around the central island is the truck apron. This allows for the back wheels of an oversized truck to ride up as they circle around, which helps these bigger vehicles maneuver through. Remember, give drivers of these oversized vehicles a little extra room. A handful of roundabouts may be shaped into more of an oval than a circle, and the number of entry and exit points may vary as well. Again, despite a number of different looks, how you navigate through a roundabout never Another great advantage is cost. Roundabouts are less expensive to maintain than traffic signal intersections and don't include operating expenses or utility fees like most traffic lights do. Roundabouts are more green than signalized intersections. Vehicles don't stop and idle as much, so there is a reduction of emissions into the environment. Plus, a landscape circle is more attractive than metal poles and traffic signals hanging in the sky. So we also like to think that roundabouts are better-looking than traditional intersections as well. More and more of these roundabouts will be replacing traffic signal intersections, but this shouldn't scare you. Using a roundabout is easy. Plus, they save us time and money while keeping us safer, too.
Roundabouts. Approaching a roundabout. Another one, or? So my thought on this is, you know, they're newer to this country, obviously Europe and other places have had them for a long time, and people understand it. But even in my experience, from country to country, they may be a little different in rules of the road and how they work. So getting how they work here, the agreement of the rules of the road for them in this country is going to be standard throughout. And don't get confused with Europe, because some of those are a little different, although the majority of them now have shifted to the yield system to get into, and once you're in, you have the right of way, generally. So I just wanted to bring that forward and spread the word a little bit. I'm not sure if that video got onto the taping. As you mentioned, there is a link on the agenda, there is a link to that, and maybe you can see that they can attach that to this later. I'll see if they can do that as well, so folks watching this can see it and not just look at us.
If you wanted it, if you're wanting, I don't know how many folks are out there watching infrastructure, and I don't know how many are going to pull up the agenda, but if you're thinking it's important to have that video available, then somewhere on the website, more easily found.
And I've mentioned this with our chief of police as well, so just kind of a thing to slowly educate all of us, because it's a newer infrastructure device that we're starting to see more and more of, so I thought it couldn't hurt. Good idea to put it on the web directly.
Yes, we'll work to get it on the website.
Great. Comments? No? Good. All right. So our last item is project updates from Sheldon, and we have a, since we have new members, why don't we explain how we've been trying to work this lately? And the difference is we start a new year as well. Go ahead, Sheldon.
Okay. So provided in the packet is a document that provides updates on projects that are in this year's work program that the council has in their budget, and also some that are development-related that may impact traffic circulation in town as well. For the first meeting of the year, we don't have any cells highlighted, it's just the gray and white. But as time goes by, month by month, what will happen is the cells that have changes in them will get highlighted in a yellow or some other color, just so that people can focus on the changes, instead of having to read the whole document each time. So this is a fresh start on the year, so there's no highlighted cells, but some of the projects carried over from last year, but a majority of them are the newer projects for this year. And so it's starting out kind of ground zero, so to speak. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the document, because also, it wasn't attached to the packet until today. So I want to make sure that we've at least gone through some of the higher priority items, maybe, not each item. And then I do have a couple of little short videos for Southeast 60 Second, as there's been a lot happening on that. And probably, it's probably about a six-minute viewing of the video. So I'm just going to kind of go through some of the highlighted projects that are on the project update sheet that are somewhat major and would probably garnish some attention. So first off, in the water utility, the Spar Pump Station and Transmission Main, just to let you guys know, we've got 90% design on that. We're completing the design this year and doing some critical areas of NEPA studies. We're still working with WashDOT on the appraised valuations and property purchase necessary for the project, as well as working with FHWA for break-in access on that. So those are things to watch. Forest Rim Pump Station, this is up off of Forest Rim Drive. We have a water pump station up there that this year, we're going to finish the design and do construction to replace that pump station. We also have on our work program in the utility to update the city's critical offshore recharge areas. So we're working with a consultant to get scope of work and get that work underway this year as well. Water system plan update, the council will see that coming to them in, let's see, I think it's later this month, referring to the March CIC, which it'll stay in the CIC for the better part of the year, because it's a process to get through the DOH and county approvals, and then eventually the city council approval. What is related to that is an agenda bill that'll probably follow about a month or so later, dealing with the funding for a water treatment plant. so later, dealing with the funding for a water treatment plant, that policy conversation and the funding request associated. And then, let's see, skipping through to the sewer utility, we've got some sewer improvements that are going on in the Pickering Basin area, as well as we're doing some rehabilitation of the sewer in South Cove, relining sewers in there. Stormwater, we're doing design work to correct some drainage problems on the East Lake-Samish Parkway area and the area of BMC. We're planning to decommission, finish decommissioning the L rig by doing mitigation projects up in Issaquah Highlands, so there'll be some work going on there associated with the retention detention pond facilities and their discharges. Let's see, what else? We'll be doing a letter of map revision for FEMA maps along Main St. Issaquah Creek, because we've done a number of projects, Dogwood Bridge, Confluence Park, stream restoration, the bridge. So there's a number of things in there that have changed the flood elevation, so we want to update the FEMA maps. I'm going to move right along to transportation now. We're working on the scope of work and contract negotiations with CHTOM Hill to do the 12th Avenue SR 900 State Park Entrance Study, associated with the TIA. We've got a number of things that Mary Jo spoke about with her presentation, and then traffic calming we spoke about tonight, complete streets code updates we spoke about tonight, Issaquah-Hobart Road Study will be coming as a briefing to this committee in March, and then full briefing to the Cal in April. And so with that, I'm now to, well, let's see.
Is there a reason that the Issaquah-Hobart Road Study needs to come to both?
This committee has had a briefing prior, and so we want to brief this committee, keep it informed, and then go to the full council committee of the whole. It's just to give this committee a heads-up as being...
It just seems duplicative. I mean, I understand why it's at this committee, but if there's a point in time where the briefing needs to be to both the committee and to the committee of the whole, I don't, so the information's going to be the same?
Yes.
Then I wouldn't think that it needs to be at both places.
Okay.
That's my input.
We'll talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so I'm going to now go to the videos for Southeast 62nd Street. And let's see, the first one I'm going to show is a time-lapse video from essentially the beginning of the project to now. It's a very quick one, maybe a minute and a half.
What you're seeing there is the reconstruction of the North Fork of Issaquah Creek. Now they're bringing in the piling for the bridge support. Installing off to the left, they're installing sheet piling, still moving the piling in for They're now, yep, they're driving piling now. Those piling are 36-inch diameter, and they go down about 100 feet. This is the pile cap that the bridge girders will sit on. A little bit of snow inside.
Okay, so that kind of gives you a really quick overview from the beginning to what, at the time in which this was stopped. So now I'm going to go to a video link that was on the Civic Web Agenda, and it'll show more of a close-up and an aerial view of what's going on.
Girders were all delivered before 6:00 a.m. each day when they delivered girders, and they delivered five in a day.
Hi, Issaquah, I'm Lisa Marshall, your neighborhood engagement coordinator, and I am here at the Southeast 62nd Street Project. I'm about to talk to resident engineer Kevin Simmons for an update. Thanks for joining us, Kevin. Can you tell us a little bit about the project?
Yeah. Welcome to the Southeast 62nd Street Extension Project, being constructed by Quig Brothers. KBA is doing the construction management on it. And as you may or may not already know, we're putting in two roundabouts, a bridge crossing the Issaquah Creek and the North Fork Creek. Those roads will be connecting from the west side of the project on Lake Drive, where what we call the West Roundabout, coming across the bridge, which is right behind us here. We've got span one, span two, and off in the distance, all the way over to span seven. We've got eight piers which span across, which puts us on the other side of the two creeks over there by the East Roundabout. That'll connect Southeast 62nd to Northeast 4th, and then 221st. Over there on that side, we've got two large stormwater detention vaults and one pedestrian undercrossing, which will be on the existing King County Regional Trail.
Fantastic. Can you tell us a little bit more about this bridge? And I've seen the girders have started to go in. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. So we're right next to about 12 feet of fill that we brought in to raise the bridge up so we could get across the creek. We're literally at Pier One, Pier Two, Pier Three. Span one spans the first two piers. You see those 36-inch diameter steel piles that come up? We drove those approximately 100 feet deep earlier this summer. We've got utilities will be hanging across the bridge. We'll be installing bridge rail, and then some observation points, which go across on the north side of the bridge.
Is there anything unique about this bridge behind us?
What's unique about the bridge is we actually cross two of Issaquah's predominant creeks, Issaquah Creek and the North Fork Creek. They join together just north of here before they enter into the state park. But you asked about specifically the bridge, what's unique. It was designed to withstand a 9.0 magnitude earthquake. What's kind of cool about it are the hinge points that come together on top of each of the pile caps and how the bridge will react under an earthquake.
And I know you also mentioned some of the streams had to be relocated?
Yeah. So the bridge spans approximately 800 feet, and in order to fit the geometry in with the two roundabouts, we actually relocated the North Fork Creek approximately 100 feet west from where it was.
That's a really big move.
It was rather, it was challenging permitting-wise. We were fortunate to be able to get it permitted and done within this year's fish window. We've restored it, and we've seen fish come back into the creek.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
So can you tell me, how is the project overall doing? How is the timeline going?
We're right on schedule. We're currently working on the East Roundabout, excuse me, the West Roundabout, which is Lake Drive connecting to Costco's headquarters. As you can see behind us, the bridge is right on schedule. We've installed five out of the seven girder spans. We've got two more coming in next week, spans three and four. And then the preload that we put on the east side has now settled out, and we'll start excavating for one of the large stormwater vaults next week.
So that's great news about the project. So at the end of all of this, how is it going to affect pedestrian access, you know, your bikers as well, with this undercrossing and everything that you're doing over here?
So that's probably one of my favorite components about this particular project. So as I said, we're building a pedestrian undercrossing on the King County Trail. That'll eliminate any trail users and road access completely. That'll be awesome. We're also tying together the existing Pickering Trail over on the other side of the creeks. We're connecting it over here to the trail system that we're standing on right here. As you can see, it'll go into the bridge. I'm excited about what we'll be providing for the cycling and the pedestrian community on this. We've got RRFBs, which are the Rapid Flash Beacons, we'll be installing at all of the major crosswalks. And like I said before, we're eliminating a major hazard on that King County Trail with constructing that undercrossing.
That's fantastic. We have a lot of very active residents here in Issaquah, so that's good news. Thanks for joining us today, Kevin, and all of the great information about the project. If you want more information about what's going on here, go to issaquahwa.gov/62.
So that's the update on Southeast 62nd with one addition to it. All the girders are in place. That video was taken about a week before the girders were put in, the last two sets, and they've been working on pouring diaphragms and things like that that help support the bridge laterally, and are actually going to be starting to pour bridge decking in the next week or so. So a lot going on.
So the most important question is, when, what's the anticipated opening schedule?
By the end of this year.
Really? That's really exciting.
Yes, by the end of this year. I don't want to put an exact date out there yet, although I do get antsy, and I'm constantly probing Kevin going, so when do we open? When do we open?
Yeah.
But it's late this year.
Great news. Is it, so on schedule or ahead?
It's on schedule, maybe slightly ahead.
How about budget?
On budget. Right now, with all the change orders that have occurred and things like that, we are still below the original contract value that was authorized in the bid award.
Are we past the point where there are things that we might discover that could push us over budget?
There's one more component left that has a risk element to it that we view as substantive, and that's replacing a sanitary sewer in 221st, the district sewer line.
Okay.
And we're working on that issue, you know, through the mayor's office.
All right.
Excellent. Victoria?
Um, there's a lot of information in the table that was provided. I had one question, which was about where there are blanks. So one of them was about, for example, the TMG Complete Street Code Update, which was presented today. And so my question would be, what are, are the blanks where there's something in the works and not specific timeline update, or why are there blanks but listed items?
Those items just haven't been filled in yet. Kurt gave a update on the Complete Street Code Update tonight. We need to come back in and fill these in. But a couple of the items in there, traffic calming program update, that's on our work program, and then the intent is also to update the pit crossing guidelines as well. We need to flesh those out further and update them for the next month.
And I have one other question that comes up a number of times in this table, which is about the design, percent design process, and some are at 60%, 90%, 30%. So I, just for my benefit, I'm wondering how that percent design, what that corresponds to, and what the process is for different projects going through that design percentage-wise.
The percent designs are indicators of how far along the staff and/or consultants are in preparing the plan specifications for bidding a project. Typically, in the 0 to 30% range, we have a higher degree of public engagement and things like that, and it's more taking it from the concept to a little bit more detail so that we can get further into the detail, which starts to get you to the 60%. And then once you reach the 90%, you're pretty much, the engineers are really in the weeds, fine-tuning what's there. No substantive changes are occurring with the design, I would say, past 60%. Because once you reach that level, you've got to be able to move and complete it, because any type of substantive change at that point at 60% or greater has substantive ripple effects for schedule, cost, and other things that are associated with the project. So we try and dial all that in, in the 0 to 30% range, so that we're just, you know, getting further and further into the detail the further along you get. And then 90% is getting really close to being bid-ready.
And being new, I have a lot of detailed questions, but one that I will ask is about the TMG bike share. So that one is, the current step is cities collaborating with King County and Seattle. Seattle reshapes their bike share program to determine regional plan. And so I was interested in what Issaquah's part in that is.
In talking with sustainability on that, they're, they will be coming to the committee. I don't know the exact month, and providing an update on the bike share program. And so this is a program by which they're, the intent is to provide bicyclists to the community so that people can use them to get around in the community.
And what is the timeline on that?
I don't have a timeline on that.
Check Mary Jo. It's not real close, by any means. It's conceptual now as far as what I know of it. It's just conversation, really.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I appreciated the videos. They're nice to see, the time-lapse videos in particular, very good visuals of the progress that has been made.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Do you have something, Kurt?
Well, I was just going to say, so the, for, so those projects that have TMG in front of them, so that's Transportation Mobility Group, and that's what Mary Jo was talking about when she started her presentation, first item this evening. And so we're in the process of developing a work plan with that group. So the TMG, the items that have TMG in front of them are, and the intent currently is to have those be work project items that come out of that Transportation Mobility Group. So we're working on setting that schedule now with them. So I think at this point, we want to have them on the list, as their placeholder. Our intent is to complete each of those this year and have the group together work on those. Will be the, PWE will be the lead on all of those items. So they'll be, and each one of them, the intent, I think, is for each one of them to come back to CIC for further discussion. So more to come on the exact schedules and dates on each of those items.
And the only comment I'll throw on that is that the TMG... And the only comment I'll throw on that is that the TMG is, is kind of a thing we've been building lately to really get a full picture of, of projects and how they affect all aspects of the community, not just purely engineering, right?
Yeah, we think that the, we have a unique, a somewhat unique group here in Issaquah to have that mobility group that draws on the expertise from a variety of departments. And so we think that these particular projects listed on, on Sheldon's list here are well-suited for that group to work together on, rather than it just be a operations or a public, or an engineering-type conversation. It's, I think, will get a better outcome by drawing on the expertise of a lot of city departments.
And that group has grown and done more over the last couple of years.
Yes.
All right. Did I see an urge over there for a last public comment?
Of course.
This goes back to the original drawings I saw of the project. The East Lake Sammamish Trail is buried. It's in a tunnel, a long tunnel. It's completely, apparently from those drawings, the entry, both entries are not visible from anybody, completely out of hearing range. Are there going to be cameras in this tunnel to make sure it's not full of graffiti like the one under Highlands Drive is, or worse? Thank you.
I knew he was going to talk about that. On the other part of that is, the reason there is that big, huge, long bridge is because they're basically went through a wetland to do that, and so that's why there's the big long bridge. And their mitigation is a set of parcels that were purchased that are eventually going to go to the Parks Department, is my understanding, but there's some stuff that needs to be done as mitigation for the road on those parcels. Which brings me to an item you didn't talk about, which was the stormwater plan that they are putting forth in order to figure out what other new stormwater slash environmental improvements that they want to do. Because we basically completed the long, wire-a-eight list of projects, and there's still some opportunities to go along. But the awesome guys in the water section were describing a holistic view of our water and stormwater as in surface, you know, more natural water. So that Sheldon didn't talk about very much. And then the last one is concurrency. And I sent you all an email about what City of Sammamish did with their concurrency, which they basically shoved a public process into it and went out to the, the people and said, what are your transportation priorities? And then they came back and they did their concurrency via the lens of what the community interests were. And I would love to see that happen with us, because we're trying to figure out how to work all of our mobility through the community's eyes now. It looks like, from this chart, that the model run is, the initial model run is done. And I'm just curious, as all get out about what that looks like, when is that going to be brought forth so that the city can see it and the community can see that? Et cetera, because we are now planning a lot of things using an old model, from what I can understand. There was one more thing, and now I've forgotten what it was, but I think it had to do with Communications Department again. So, they, did they ever come to a meeting? Not infrastructure?
I don't know, I don't know.
All right. Does that wrap us up for tonight? Anything last comments?
I just wanted to echo concerns about the new tunnel. The tunnel we do have is not, is long, and I've been in it many times, and I think one of the concerns would be night, when it's dark. And so a tunnel, I don't know what the plans are for lighting in this one, both during the daytime and at night, and if you all have had conversations about safety issues.
The, those issues were discussed with King County. The tunnel is well-lit on the inside, from one end to the other. And if you were to stand on one end, you can see all the way through it to the other end. There are no blind spots in the tunnel.
The new one?
The new one. It's the only tunnel I'm aware of on East Lake Sammamish Trail. It's the one we're building right now.
Well, we have the other, the one up here.
Oh, the Sunset Interchange one, yes. This one's different than that one, the one at the Sunset Interchange. I've been through it, and you can't see from one end to the other.
And it's, I don't think it's lit at night.
It has like two lights in it. It's not, and from, they may be burned out, I don't know. But yeah, it's not well-lit.
Somebody should probably go up there and check that out, because I'm hearing it's dark at night.
Yeah. Okay.
One more question. In the, one of the presentations, they spoke about the fish returning to the stream after it been diverted, and I am wondering if there's any, other than anecdotal, if there's any effort to actually determine if the fish do come back and, and if so, if they're coming back in similar numbers once the stream has been moved.
I know we have to monitor the stream as part of our mitigations, but I'm not sure that there was specific fish counts, if you're thinking salmonids, in there. We've been working with fisheries on that, and actually, the fisheries biologists and managers are tickled pink with the North Fork, the way it is right now. And they watched it very closely when it was being done. But note taken about the fish counts on that.
And successful spawning. All right? So with that, we're adjourned.